Good morning Tina, we are live. So, just so you're aware.
Okay, I'm gonna say good morning everyone. Public hearing before the Akron City Planning Commission will come to order. The order of procedure here today will be, the Department of Planning and Urban Development will present each of the petitions or applications on the agenda. We will hear from the proponents, we will hear from the opponents. The planning commission members will then consider their decision on each matter. Our decision may be for approval, disapproval, or time for additional study. Anyone wishing to speak on a specific item, under consideration will be recognized and identify himself or herself by name and address. I'd also like to announce to those of you in attendance that if you intend to speak or offer any comment or opinion pertaining to any items in this program, you will need to be sworn in for your testimony.
Madam Chair, I can swear in Mike Antonucci and Abraham Westcott now and then I'll swear in the other witnesses as they appear.
Thank you.
Mr. Antonucci, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And Mr. Westcott, same question? Take your mute off.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve minutes from our previous meeting? Julie?
Gary Wyatt, second motion.
And Ms. Boys?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Aye.
And Sweet Bunton? Sweet Bunton? I can't hear her. Julianne, are you unmuted?
Julianne, I would suggest disconnecting the audio in the bottom left-hand corner next to the microphone and then reconnecting it. And then if your computer persists on not cooperating using the call-in option for audio. It was working when she came in.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, we're in roll call. Julianne Sweet Bunton.
Yes.
Ms. York?
Aye.
This is Green.
Yes. Thank you. PC 202024V, vacation of a portion of Ravine Street north of Hickory Street. Antonucci.
Yes, thank you Madam Chair, Commission Members. My name is Mike Antonucci. I'm the City of Akron zoning manager and I'm gonna share my screen. Okay. The City of Akron is seeking the vacation of a portion of the unimproved Ravine Street situated between Hickory Street and the Ohio Canal. In 2016, the city began construction on the Ohio Canal Interceptor Tunnel and Tunnel Diversion Structure. Tunnel is now complete and terminates at the diversion structure at a point within Ravine Street right-of-way just north of Hickory Street. While the tunnel's complete, there still needs to be some river restoration and that's gonna be starting soon. It should be done. Everything should be done by the end of the fall. This portion of Ravine Street will not be needed for public access or right-of-way purposes. Once vacated, the street and several other city lots will be consolidated to create a single property for long-term operation and maintenance of the tunnel and diversion facility. The vacation and consolidation of properties should simplify maintenance for the city and should not have any effect on the surrounding area and the planning staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Is anyone here to speak in favor of this item? Anyone speak in opposition? Any questions from the commission? Recommendation?
Move to approve.
Ms. Boys?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
And Sweet Bunton?
Yes.
Ms. York?
Aye.
This is Green.
Yes. Declare the public hearing on this item closed. Public hearing for the City Planning Commission will come to order. The order of procedure here today will be, the Department of Planning and Urban Development will present each of the petitions or applications on the agenda. We will hear from the proponents, we will hear from the opponents. The planning commission members will then consider their decision on each matter. Our decision may be for approval, disapproval, or time for additional study. Anyone wishing to speak on a specific item, under consideration will be recognized and identify himself or herself by name and address. Would like also to announce to those of you in attendance that if you intend to speak or offer any comment or opinion pertaining to any items in this program, you will need to be sworn in for your testimony. PC 202028CU, petition of Deshaun A. Johnson for a conditional use to establish a Type A daycare home at 1355 Blackstone Avenue. Mr. Antonucci?
Madam Chair, Commission Members, my name is Mike Antonucci, member of the zoning staff. Deshaun A. Johnson is requesting permission to establish a Type A child daycare home at this location. Proposed daycare home, also known as Miles of Smiles Inclusion Center, would be located on the main floor of this ranch-style 720-square-foot home. The facility would provide services and activities for up to 12 children ranging from six weeks to five years of age. It would be operated 24 hours a day, Monday through Thursday, and up to 11:00 PM on Friday. Limited hours on Saturday would be from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, would be closed on Sunday. Petitioner plans on hiring an additional employee. The property contains an outdoor play area. Petitioner has stated that she has worked in the childcare field for two years and has achieved an associate's degree in early childhood education. She's also been approved for for the required courses necessary for state of Ohio licensing and the dwelling is up to code and has been approved by necessary entities. While the petitioner has stated she does not intend to care for 12 children at one time, but the Type A license gives her more flexibility in scheduling. Providing care for up to 12 children under the age of six should not have a detrimental effect on the nearby homes and providing quality daycare services is beneficial to the entire city and as such, the planning staff recommends approval of this request.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this item?
I had somebody in the waiting room that was named iPhone and they left, so I'm not sure if they intended to come back in and rename themselves using a computer. I don't know if you want to give them a minute to see if they'll come back or not. That's up to Mike, John, and Renee, I suppose.
Renee, whatever's your pleasure there.
My pleasure is to move on. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this item? Anyone speak in opposition? Are there any questions from the commission? We'll declare this public hearing closed. What's the recommendation of the commission?
Move to approve.
Second.
Hey, Ms. Boys?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
And Sweet Bunton?
Yes.
Ms. York?
Aye.
This is Green.
Yes. Thank you. Public hearing before the Akron City Planning Commission is in order. The order of procedure here today will be the Department of Planning and Urban Development will present each of the petitions or applications on the agenda. We will hear from the proponents, we will hear from the opponents. The planning commission members will then consider their decision on each matter. Our decision may be for approval, disapproval, or time for additional study. Anyone wishing to speak on a specific item, under consideration will be recognized and identify himself or herself by name and address. Also like to announce to those in attendance that if you intend to speak or offer any comment or opinion pertaining to any items in this program, you will need to be sworn in for your testimony. PC 202022S, sale of city-owned land on Hickory Street and Hubbard Street to Doug M. Muldar Living Trust. Mr. Westcott?
Good morning, Madam Chairman, woman and the Akron City Commission, Planning Commission Members. Abraham Westcott, Development Manager for the Office of Integrated Development. The City of Akron is the owner of three parcels of land located in the Hickory Corridor on Hickory Street and Hubbard Street approximately 150 feet west of North Maple Street in Akron, Ohio. The properties contain approximately 24,680 square feet of vacant land next to and in the rear of 203 Hickory Street. The city wishes to sell these parcels for $24,806 to the neighboring property owner David Molador. These properties are not needed for municipal purposes. The sale of lots will divest the city of properties and will no longer need to maintain. The recommendation is approval for the sale of city-owned land on Hickory Street and Hubbard Streets to David Molador Trust for $24,806.
Thank you. Is anyone here to speak in favor of this item?
Well, we are, David and Susan are here. LinkedIn.
David and Susan, can you raise your right hand, please? I just want to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and Ms. Graham, are you also here on this property?
I am here.
Okay, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this item? Anyone speak in opposition?
This is Peggy Graham. I started a conversation with the city in 2017, actually a little bit before that, making a formal request for a portion of the parcels being discussed right now. I-
Could you give us your address, please? Sorry.
The, it's 189 North Maple is my abutting property.
Okay.
You may- Excuse me, it's 180. Excuse me.
Okay, go ahead.
Yep, so I attached in my email requesting to participate a number of email communications with the city that go back through 2017 when I did make a request through the Lotfoot for a Little Program and through multiple communications with Chris Snyder, Abraham Westcott, Jason Segidie, John Moore. And the feedback I got every year was, we're not ready to sell that parcel until the construction is complete. When the tunnel boring was done, I reached out again. They said, and basically, John Moore said, we're not ready yet. We still have to do all the lining of construction. Last, late last summer, I ran into Jason Segidie at a community meeting about this tunnel project and asked him if he could help me, which he did. He made, he reached out to the participating people and asked them to contact me. At that time, I was told that still, we're not ready to sell the property, but another person has expressed some interest and I've heard nothing further. I expected at the time, the property was ready to be sold, I'd be contacted. I fully support the parcel adjacent to, on Hickory Street, adjacent to David and Susan's property, to go to them without question. I would like a reconsideration of how the two landlocked parcels, the long narrow ones, which you can see back there. I propose that they be replatted, split along the parcel line that goes from Hickory straight back through. And the portion of the half of that block abutting my property would go to me and the half of that block would go to David and Susan. That was what I proposed from the beginning and I, I'm very disappointed after all the communications I've had with the city, nobody came back to me to discuss this. And my formal request was never closed.
Okay, is there anyone else to speak in opposition? Any questions from the commission?
I think David said something, but he might have been muted.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, would you give us your name and address, please?
Yeah, we're unmuted now. Go ahead.
Excuse me for not getting back in touch with you Peggy. It was suggested that we just try to acquire those properties.
Sir, could you please identify your name and address so we know who we're listening to?
This is David Molador at 203 Hickory Street.
Okay.
Okay. The properties wanted to be acquired Peggy and excuse me for not getting back in touch with you. It was not fully proposed and it was not seen through yet and it's, I know that you requested those, that property be subdivided. It was thought that it would be too complicated to subdivide it at this point. I, I've been in contact with Mike W. and it was thought that he would, it would be too complicated at this point, just to get the transfer of the property to our name first and then we could talk. But, guess not. That's all I have to say.
Okay, could you explain who Mike W. might be?
Mike W. is the head engineer for the project area here. He's been coordinating things between us and the tunnel boring operations and the construction across Hickory Street.
So David, my concern is not so much with you as it is with the city not getting back to me and following through on a process that I initiated with them years ago and reached out to them a couple times a year, every year, and they did not follow through with me. So that's, that's my issue and my concern.
Any questions from the commission? Mr. Antonucci, can you shed some light on this?
Oh yeah, so it's really zoning, so I really didn't have a lot of, you know, input into what happened back in the day, but I can say that in terms of what, you know, for planning commission today, really, you know, planning commission's role here would really be to whether or not this property should be disposed of or whether or not the city has a use for it. You know, looking at, you know, general planning principles and, you know, based on where this is, is there a, is there a public purpose for this property? And really, that's, that's really what planning commission really should be focused on today. So I'll just leave the rest up to Abraham. I think Abraham has some, some words to add.
Yeah, well, yeah, this is Abraham. Yeah, just echo what Mike's saying. Yeah, we, we do not need these for our purpose, so we do request for disposition at this time.
Questions by commission?
Yes. Go ahead.
So-
Julianne, are you speaking or me? I don't know.
Hi, Stephanie and then Julianne, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, is it really that hard to, it looks like those two properties are split, the lengthwise ones at the back of the, looking at it, it would be towards the little Kyahoga Intercept, Interceptor. Those two properties look like they're already split. Is there a problem with splitting it or not? I mean, I'm confused as well.
The, the property would create a flags, basically a flag property, so it would make, again, and basically planning principles to create this one big parcel for 203 Hickory Street, makes it one large property and it won't create any more flags. It won't be a point where the property owner on Maple Street would own any property behind Molador, so it's just a simple planning concept and principle that is in place here. That's why it's best to do it this correct, this way that is being proposed.
Julie?
Okay, so you've got three parcels here, so which parcel is where? So, so adjacent to the lady that has objected, for lack of a better word, so are those two separate parcels and then the third parcel is the larger piece next to Moladars? Or how is that? How are those, you have three parcel numbers here, so?
Right, if you look at, could you look at the screen share? So this is Mr. Molador's house and then these are the three parcels involved. This is, I believe, the property Mrs. Graham is talking about.
That's correct.
And so this would create one rectangular parcel, which is consistent with our subdivision regulations. And then this is Graham's parcel, is this another parcel here. I think-
Not being sold, though, correct?
As opposed to having, no, it's not. But as opposed to splitting it this way and having essentially a flag lot, which we generally, you know, try not to do. It, it just, it makes more sense just from a, you know, subdivision requirement standpoint and just general planning to have a rectangular lot and a nice, a nice rectangular lot here.
Okay, I didn't know. I thought the other house was the Molador's house, so that's what I was, okay. So the property then behind that's not for sale, is that city-owned or is that, what is that?
What, this over here?
No, down. Right there. Over, over. Where the arrow ends. What is that?
That's-
That's Graham's property.
I don't know if it would be helpful, but in one of my attachments, I added a satellite view with the parcel numbers on it and my proposed division of that, the rear two lots does identify the parcel numbers clearly.
Well, I would also like to, I would just, I would just say that this, you know, once there's a sales agreement drawn up, and Abraham, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this will go to city council. City council pretty much has the power of the purse. I mean, essentially, city council, you know, will deal with things like who's, who's, you know, getting what and what cost and that kind of thing. So right here, you know, again, planning commission is looking at, is there a public purpose with this? Does this meet planning principles and that kind of thing? So that's kind of where we're at right now. And any further discussion and, you know, any kind of negotiation can take place after.
I'm uncomfortable with that primarily because the document that was sent to me was very specific and it is the recommendation, as I understand it, that this group is making to city council. And I'm still, I don't feel like a typical good planning approach, planning subdivision is a good reason for the city not to respond to me after years and years of effortful communication to accomplish something. Whether or not the ultimate resolution, regardless of the ultimate resolution, this feels premature to me. Nobody came back and talked to me about something I've been working on for years. I, that's shocking to me. And, you know, the concept of it might create a flag. It, okay. It's never been mentioned to me before. And I think it's because when I originally proposed it, these other, this other getting that buildable parcel along with the unbuiltable parcels to David wasn't, wasn't being discussed at the time when I initially, and I David and Susan deserve to have whatever they want over there as far as that goes. You know, they've been, they've had to endure quite a lot with the OSIT tunnel situation. But I think this is premature to have something when this conversation does not finish with me and that there was not a negotiation with me.
Okay, is there anyone else to speak in opposition? Any further questions from the commission? We'll declare the public hearing closed and what's the recommendation of the commission?
Move to disapprove and allow the time for the property owners and the city to work out in a minimal deal.
I second that.
Ms. Boys?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt? This is Sweet Bunton?
Yes.
Ms. York?
Aye.
This is Green.
Yes. Can we move on to renewals? Item number one, recommendation for approval. The petitioner has complied and is maintaining the property.
Second.
Ms. York?
I missed that. Say it again.
Renewal item number one. Send motion and second of the- Then, motion and second, and the petitioner has complied and is maintaining the property.
Aye.
This Sweet Bunton?
Aye.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yeah.
This is Green?
Yes.
Ms. Boys?
Yes.
Okay, item number two, recommendation for approval. The petitioner has complied and is maintaining the property.
Second.
This is York?
Aye.
Sweet Bunton?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yeah.
Ms. Boys?
Yes.
This is Green?
Yes. Is there anything else that needs to come before the Commission?
Ma'am?
Okay, got a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.